Mike McColl here in the Royal Examiner Studios. With me this morning is Councilman Eugene T. Walt. Eugene, thanks for stopping by at the Monday work session. You brought up the fact about the EDA workforce housing and thinking about rescinding some of those, I call them proffers, what would you call those, exceptions to the rules that you allowed? Tell us a little bit about what the background is on that.
Well, I don't know what year it was, probably a couple of years ago when it first came to us. Jennifer came to us and asked us to give some, really some recessions as far as our zoning ordinance because they wanted to build this workforce housing and that they were going to be the actual builders and they were going to carry it for five years and they were also going to be the renters at that point and then after five years they were going to go ahead and sell it to a private individual. And when she came there, they wanted us to amend our ordinances in order to allow them to build in regards to the dead end street. And when you get Royal Lane, it's dead end, it's already full as far as our zoning code is required and they wanted us to give them the approval to allow this to take place, which was against our actual subdivision ordinance. So after we discussed that and several other issues, we decided that the council decided to go ahead and give them the reprieve as far as the dead end street requirements and we issued them a special use permit in regards to the building of this workforce housing. Again, that probably was a good idea to do the workforce housing. I know Councilman Seelock was on the board and he was pushing that pretty well. So we felt since the EDA was going to sponsor it, we felt that it would probably be a good idea because it's something that we probably do need in Front Royal Warren County. And so we agreed to allow them to, give them a special use permit because they were the ones that were going to actually do the building and the control of the building for at least five years.
Workforce housing has a, has a, has a good title, workforce housing, but in reality, isn't it just a income-based housing project that it's going to be based upon how much income you make, not really what your profession is? So anybody that met the income requirements could live in there?
Well, I imagine it could. We didn't go into any depth of that. We were told that it was pretty much for teachers and police officers and people of that magnitude. And, but again, you know, it sounded like a pretty good idea at the time and so we, the council as a whole, pretty much agreed to that.
Yeah, I was, the Royal Examiner's camera was there, so we probably have that on video somewhere, those, those work sessions and the, and the talks. And I do recall a lot of discussion back and forth on the benefits and I know Ms. Jennifer really put the sales pitch on how much this was needed for our policemen and schoolteachers and really threw out a lot of statistics about, you know, people leaving their jobs because they couldn't find a place to live, et cetera, et cetera. So I know she bent your ear at the council meeting. Also, I think on the other things, didn't you change like, like two exits or two entrances and exits and you got down to one and changed the size of right aways? And it was pretty extensive exemption.
It was. I know that when they first came in, they wanted to narrow the street from the 40-foot width down to, I think, I'm not sure, 32 feet, I believe.
I think it was 32.
And I was 100% against that because, you know, when you, when you develop a piece of property, you need streets wide enough for people to maneuver and be able to get too far, wrap it around this is in and things of that nature. So that was one thing I was against and we did get that widened back to the 40 feet. But there was some other incentives that they wanted, which was, like I said, the, the dead end street, which you can only have so many homes on a dead end street. And we gave them that reprieve on that one so that they could build these houses without the second entrance.
It also started off as a 36 apartment complex and then kept being reduced down, reduced down and ended up, I think, at 24 units. So it kept getting a smaller project as time went on.
Well, I'm really not aware at this point exactly how many was, I finally approved. I really, really don't know at this point than going back and looking at what we actually gave them the approval of.
How about the comments of, you gave these special use permit. Now, do you think council would have given that if it wasn't for the EDA?
No, I don't think so. At least I wouldn't have been in favor of that because, you know, again, we hold developers and people a little bit more to the subdivision ordinances and because it was the EDA, we felt, or at least I felt, that maybe we could give them a little reprieve because it was for a special thing, something that might benefit the Front Royal Warren County as far as housing. And mainly due to the fact that we should, you know, we were trying to work with the EDA in regards to, you know, bringing this, this come to fruition.
So you, you, you want to have the council then to examine those, those things and maybe rescinding those special use permit?
Well, yeah, that, that's really the main thing that I'm trying to bring forward is the fact that, you know, we allowed it, we approved it under the, under the auspices of the EDA. And then later we found out that the things that Mrs. McDonald had told us in regards to the workforce housing, that it didn't come to fruition because they wanted to, they were going to, like I said, operate it for five years and then it was go in, out to the general public to be sold and then someone else would come in and come to find out that was not the, not the actual thing that was going to happen. And so she really had lied to us in regards to that. And so I feel that since she lied to us, that we need to go back and start over again. And I think we need to rescind the special use permit and let whoever owns the land at this point come back in and reapply. And we'll look at all the issues and if we agree on some of the issues that might help to get a workforce housing project started, then I may consider, you know, being in favor of it.
The whole project was kind of a fiasco from the beginning. The land was free, not free, then we end up spending a half a million dollars on free land and, and no, we're going to run it for five years to, oh, we already had, the Atkins group was going to be involved in it from day one. So I think the whole thing sounds like fraud to me.
Well, it probably is, but, but we never was told. We knew that there was going to be a solid partner and Jennifer would never tell us who it was. So we didn't know who that solid partner was. And again, with what she had told us, we felt that the solid partner, in my opinion, we thought, or I thought, that it was going to be a contractor and/or a developer, but I didn't realize that the magnitude of what was going to take place. And then after we found out, find out, which we didn't have anything to do with any, in regards to the property, we didn't know anything about that until down the road, maybe another year later, that the land was going to be given to them free on their tax credits and that never come to fruition. And finally, they sold it and again, we had nothing to do with the sale and/or the purchase of the property. So, you know, we were not involved at all as far as the ramifications of the project in general, other than the fact that they came to us because we have to give them the approval to, to get the special use permit.
Right. Speaking of that, we, we know our former mayor Hollis Tharp wants to make it clear that he's not related to anything, made no money off of it, didn't know anything about it. You know, he said Jennifer's his cousin, but that's as far as that project went. So we want to make sure that everybody understands Hollis had nothing to do with this project.
True.
He, he wants to make sure we tell everybody that. People want to blame Hollis for everything, but you know, that's, that's great. So you've met the new EDA director, you've heard his reports and we've interviewed him here at the Royal Examiner. Because, you know, you don't want to taint future EDA projects based upon previous EDA projects. We hope that the EDA is going to, should and will do some great things for our county.
Well, you know, as far as the EDA is concerned, you know, we don't really get too involved with the EDA other than some fiduciary things and unless they have a project in town that we have to give approvals for and things of that nature. But really truthfully, I hope that the new director can get things worked out where everything gets back above board and everybody can, can share the, the EDA and bring in businesses into Warren County, Front Royal and, and the county can actually get rewarded by having a person that's going to try and work with the people and bring in these, these businesses into the area because we need more, more commercial businesses in the Front Royal Warren County area.
Well, you know, the whole thing boils around building, getting our trust back. You know, the council has taken a lot of flak over the EDA. Kind of like, you know, just because you're working on a project, they think the council has everything to do with the EDA, like, you know, you're in charge of it. And even the Board of Supervisors, of course, they are taking a little more fiscal responsibility this year, but really the EDA is its own separate entity.
Well, yeah, the EDA was set up specifically for the purpose of bringing businesses into communities by the state. And in that, in that relationship, we were part of it, I believe, until 2014 or there about. And then we decided that we were not, you know, getting proper representation from them because we only had appointed one on the board and out of the five. So we just felt that it was time for us to get out of it and we did. And so since that time, we really hadn't hardly any, as far as any interest in the EDA other than the fact they, when it was something related to us such as the Leech Run Parkway and things of that nature.
Projects.
Projects of the Police Department, things like that, which came, did not come to fruition as well. But the EDA is a, is a separate entity and we don't really get involved in anything unless it pertains strictly to us.
So the town council provides no funding whatsoever to the EDA?
No, not, not one nickel, no.
Right. So, so only time we deal with the EDA as far as town goes is based upon particular projects and typically infrastructure-type projects and things like that?
That's, that's correct. And the only, like I said, the only ones that we really been involved with was the Police Department. We thought that we was going to get the New Market Tax Credits that Jennifer had told us about. And we were really hoping for that. And then we, when we found out really that the truth of the matter was that we had never been approved to get any money from the New Market Tax Credits and then everything just fell apart because we had been told things that didn't come to reality. And so now we have to go back and to borrow the money through a bond system, through the VML. And it's going to cost the taxpayers of Front Royal another one or one and a half, maybe two cents per, of interest per year, which amounts to quite a bit of money on a $10 million project. As far as the Leech Run Parkway, we had an agreement there that we had revenue sharing money, we had county money and we had town money. And we were pretty fortunate to get the revenue sharing, so our cost was less than what we anticipated. As far as the West Main Connector, we don't know about that yet because there was an agreement that so many million dollars was going to be spent by TRAM and the IT Federal. And we were told now that because they didn't follow through with all the things that they were supposed to do, that the town may have to pay back an extra number of dollars, like six or $700,000 back to the state because it was a state-funded project. But we won't know that until, I believe, 2021. I'm not sure 100% of that, but I believe it's somewhere around 2021 that we will know for sure whether we have to pay part of it back or not.
Hopefully we'll have some new businesses come in, into the park and offset some of those expenses that we have. You know, we're setting on really a great piece of property there. I mean, for Front Royal, that's about, you know, in the actual town limits, that's a, that's a great place for businesses and you put the infrastructure in, the roads are going in, we have this water sewer, everything's really there to go. People don't realize how much stuff is there underground already and literally almost becoming a shovel-ready project.
Well, it really is a, basically a shovel-ready project. We are building, and I'm not sure if we, if it's completed yet, but we're building a pumping station out there for the sanitary sewer water to go back to our system. You know, we are in the process of building the road at this time to go into the first phases of the, the project. And it's around somewhere in the neighborhood of, I believe, 400 acres that we can develop. And the land lasts very flat. It would be an ideal, you know, industrial site park for high-tech businesses and things of that nature. And if we could just get somebody out to actually try to get people to come in here as far as the businesses, because really truthfully, I don't think it's really been advertised properly. I don't think it's been properly given out into the public sector so people would know that it's available for this high-tech position and buildings.
Well, like, now that we're finding out, a lot of time has been spent covering up things more than exposing things. So hopefully we'll be able to proceed forward and have a really positive outcome for Front Royal Warren County. Because like you said, it's going to be a great high-tech, it can be a high-tech campus the way the plans are and the way the location of town. That does bring up an issue, one of the things will keep business from coming is housing. You know, that's obviously a big thing coming up next week at the county for that Crooked Run West project. But we also have land already, I guess you would say plotted, ready to go, right here in the town of Front Royal for what, 1,500 homes? There's some projects been on the books, been trying to be developed out here off of Happy Creek Road. Is that correct?
Yes, we have. Right now on the books, we have over 1,000 units that's already partially been approved. It hasn't been 100% approved as at this point, but, but we've made a commitment of around a little over 1,000 homes out in the eastern corridor on the Happy Creek Road for the projects that's already been, you know, approved and.
Yeah, because I was looking back in 2008, 2009, or 2007, I guess, just before the housing bubble broke, there was large tract developers looking at that land to come in there. So we have in-town water, sewer, roads, amenities that are already here, ready to go. Schools been built. We really have a, we're ready for that project. Like I said, a lot of things have to be tied together for these industries and these jobs to come here. I mean, if we don't have a workforce, we don't have a place for a workforce to live, it's unlikely that you're going to get these 400 and 500 job-type businesses coming in our community.
Well, I think that's correct. You know, we need to be proactive in trying to get these things into the Front Royal area. So we do have enough housing for people if this, if this project begins to develop. And if, if it comes in as, which I hope it will, that with the amount of land that we have on the old Abtech site, that it'll bring in a lot of high-tech jobs. And with the high-tech job, we need nice affordable homes for people to come here from Northern Virginia or wherever they may come from in order to support that.
Right. Because I do know, you know, we have a, a large amount of transient individuals that come through the county and also we have an extremely high amount of rental property. And, and that's not always good for our community either. That's why we have back to workforce housing because that's literally adding more rental property to our community.
Well, really, I think the amount of rental properties we have in Front Royal at this point is really more of a detriment than an asset because you find a lot of the renters are from out of town. They really don't care a whole lot about Front Royal and you'll see by looking at some of them, that the houses are becoming derelict and they're not being maintained properly. And it's becoming, in my opinion, an eyesore to the community.
Right, right. Well, I know we spend a lot of our resources taking care of other issues considering policing and, and maintenance and complaints to council about all sorts of things. And it's that, what I always say, it's that 2% of our population that we, we spend 98% of our time dealing with, it seems like. But go back to, we've got a really good anchor over there at Abtechs. We got our Police Department there. We're having an open house Saturday on the Police Department and I think the public will be able to go in and see, see that. I've talked to a few officers, they think it's, it's great. They're just really, really tickled that they have a nice place to, to call home, so to speak. And, but you know, you don't really see any activity. I tell the, told the chief, I said, "Don't even look like you've moved in." He said, "Everything's behind the wall."
That's true.
You really don't even know it's there.
Well, that's true. It's a nice facility. I, Mr. Seelock and I have went out several times and during the construction, looked at it and it's really nice. It's going to be a big asset to the community, especially for the Police Department. Since I've been here, and I've been here 40-some years and as being the Public Works Director and all that, we renovated the old Police Department and then later we did the, the old Sheriff's Department and everything was really not adequate for a Police Department. So now hopefully that what we have now and the money that we're spending on it is going to be well worth it and we're going to have a real function, good, really a good functional Police Department. Not saying they weren't already, but I think it could get better and have a little bit more incentive to, to carry on their job as for the best for the community because we need good police officers, we need good people that come in the Front Royal to do those positions. And right now I think we have a great Police Department and everything seems to be going very well.
Well, I think we've built our infrastructure up when I, including, like you say, the Police Department. The county has been working on building up the Fire Department over the last couple of years. And we have schools, we have beautiful schools, we have money that's been budgeted in our taxes for pay raises, even though they may, some people think they're small, but when we're looking at it, I think we're getting competitive with our surrounding communities. We have, you know, we have the location, location, location. Now we just need to get, and again, I put it back on the EDA, is we need a champion for Warren County. And I talked to Doug Parsons, our new director, and I think he is going to be out championing Warren County, Front Royal in the future. And I think we're going to see things happen probably sooner than later because now people look at it, I kind of tell, I use the example of a bankruptcy. You know, once you go bankrupt, the next day the credit card orders come rolling in because they know, hey, you can't go bankrupt again for seven more years. So your credit's pretty good. And I think it's the same way, while you've cleaned house, you've got your, you've recognized your problems, you're being proactive on fixing it. And we want to be a part of a community that's wanting to move forward. You got good schools, you got Police Department, you got good, you know, things that are great. We have an upgraded water sewer system. There's been a lot of money spent in this community over the last five or 10 years that I think some of it we don't see because it's hidden underground, you know? But I think we're going to start seeing that come forward in the rear, near future, so.
Well, we need that for Front Royal to survive and Warren County because without proper commercial and development as far as businesses, then, you know, we go, we digress each year.
Sure.
So everything that the EDA can do to enhance our community, but we need to realize that the new director needs to be a salesperson. He needs to sell Front Royal Warren County to these people that are wanting to come in and develop land and be a part of the community. So it's really important, to far as I'm concerned, for the EDA director to be that person that goes out and sells Front Royal Warren County to the general public and bring those businesses in here.
Well, I think too, each individual can be a salesman for our community. We need to have a good positive attitude about our community. Think of, you know, sure, there's a couple of negative things have been going on, but there, I think the good outweighs the bad. I think the Board of Supervisors needs to be really positive, the town council needs to put a positive foot forward. And again, I think it boils down to each of us as individuals to go out there and take pride in our community. Yeah, there's had a few hiccups along the way and we're aggravated, I think, over some of the things that we've lost trust with some individuals. But, you know, it goes back to that 98%, you know, we really have a lot of good things. People still, it's like our country, people still want to come here and people still want to come to Front Royal. They're moving here every day. So we have a lot of great things to offer. When I sit and talk to people about all the great things that they have, they still get down, they still talk about how they really like the community and just everything rolled into a package, I think, you know?
Well, again, we need to be proactive and we need to, like I said, sell Front Royal Warren County to the people that may want to come in here and, and set up their commercial businesses. And, and we need that person to be proactive and we need someone that will go out and sell the community to the public. I really don't think we've had that in the past in some, some respects. But I think that even though we've had a lot of problems with the EDA and other issues, but again, you know, we need to go forward. We can't go backwards. We don't want to begin to digress in regards to our commercial entities coming into the area. So we need to be proactive, we need to work with the county, the EDA and the town and all of us work together for a common good. And if we don't do that, then things will become stagnant again and I don't want to see that. I want to see us all work together to the, to the betterment. We, like I said, we have nice schools, we have upgraded our water plant, our sewer plant, we've upgraded other things in Front Royal, a new Police Department.
Hey, the movie theater's all digital with brand-new seats. What more can you ask for?
That's true. So, you know, if, well, again, as, you know, when you work together, you can get things accomplished. When you don't work together and you're working against one another, nothing gets accomplished. So I'm in favor personally of working and trying to bring Warren County and Front Royal forward in a proactive atmosphere so that we all can reap the benefits from it in the future.
Well, that's great. Really appreciate all the work you do. I know you take a lot of flak on the town council. There's always, you know, Facebook comments about how the council, you know, is dumber than a bucket of rocks, you know? But it takes a lot of work to do that and I think people really don't give credit to our supervisors and our councilmen and women that volunteer literally to do this. And it takes a lot of time, other than just showing up for a meeting for an hour. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, I know. A lot of meetings, a lot of time, a lot of discussions and it is, it takes a lot of time. And I think that citizens, instead of complaining, let's give us some solutions, let's help, support each other, let's give us your ideas. You know, I'm sure, I know that you accept those. You want people to come and, and tell us your problems and also give us some solutions to your ideas because, you know, I hate to use the word it takes a village, but you know, it, it does take a lot of people working together to do these things. And we're hoping that the Royal Examiner can, can help, you know, facilitate some of this and get the word out and encourage people instead of just everything being so negative that, you know, it's our government and the only way it gets better is if we're better.
That's true. And we need the general public to come in and, like I said, discuss things with us. If they got a good idea and it's feasible to follow through with something of that nature, then it's great. But again, you know, when you get all, nothing but criticism, then nothing gets accomplished and then everybody gets on the negative side.
Exactly. Kind of breeds that, doesn't it?
That's right. And so, you know, if, if the general public has an issue, then come to one of the councilmen or the mayor and bring, bring the things that they need to talk about forward and we'll review them. And if it was something that could be an asset that could, to the community, I'm sure that we would be more than happy to address it and follow through it.
Well, I do know you, a lot of things the council has done like that. Let's real quickly talk about like the parking issue. And that was something you were instrumental in bringing forth and getting a code change because, you know, we were having businesses literally shut down or not coming to Front Royal because inadequate parking of some of these old building sites. And one of the things I know that you really stressed and got the code changed that allow a lot of businesses to come now. And, you know, we got to deal with parking and I know we, our town was very flexible on, on that because for a while it was no, 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 you know? And I do know that you were very instrumental in bringing that change because you listened to citizens. And remember, a lot of them came to you and a lot of businesses that said, "I want to come to Front Royal, but I, the business, you know, the zoning keeps turning me down." And building after building after building, it wasn't just one location. So I do know that, that you do listen and that you do, and you listen on this, on this EDA workforce housing project too, because I know citizens have talked to you about that in the past and you have brought that forward. And it looks like now the new mayor and the council will at least entertain going back and reexamining that, that workforce housing project.
That's true. And going back to the parking, you know, when you have a business and it's been there for 20, 30 years and the new parking laws change, you know, the property doesn't change. The property doesn't get any larger. So if you want to continue to have a viable business in that particular building or area, then you have to change with that and give them the right to use the property because, like I said, if you've got a half acre land and you need an acre, you can't expand it.
That's right.
So you have to give in and let the grandfather clause come in and allow people to use the property to the best of, and best use they can use it for, to bring in those commercial businesses. But again, you know, unless, unless somebody comes in and tells us about certain issues, you know, we, we, we cover a lot of area and unless somebody comes in and tells us about issues and things, we just don't understand or don't really know what they are. And if somebody comes in and, and has a good viable interest in a piece of real estate that we can change to make it be more adequate for the business that would be coming in, I'm sure the council as a whole would be more, more than adequately agree to changing whatever we need to bring those businesses in here.
Right.
And so we need to work with the public and the public needs to work with us. And the more, you know, sometimes people just want to be on the negative side, like I've said before, and just complain about issues and never come in and try to pursue and correct the problems we may have.
Well, we're going to go positive and we're going to go forward. Well, we're going to go positive, and we're going to go forward, so.
I hope so, because we need that in Warren County, especially with all the issues that are going on.
Right.
You know, we can't let this stop us, so we got to move forward and put it behind us, and hopefully that this can happen within the next six months or year, and, and we're right back to where we were before, and bringing businesses in and, and helping the community as far as our tax base, and, and I think we can do that if we all work together towards the one common goal, and that is to bring commercial businesses into Front Royal, Warren County.
Well, I appreciate you, Gene, coming in and talking to us and, and discussing these things with us. I think we would need to do more of that. I think we'll try to get some of the other councilmen and supervisors in and get things off their chest and, and to discuss some ideas and to encourage people to, you know, cooperate with the council and vice versa, get the council to cooperate with the, the public. You know, we had that meeting with 52 speakers, you know?
Yes, right.
But, you know, they, they do it, so we want them to be, we don't want them to wait till there's a problem. Let's go ahead and discuss it ahead of time. But again, thanks a lot. I appreciate everything that you do on the council and coming in and speaking with us today, and, and we'll try to encourage everyone to be positive and go forward.
I appreciate that.
All right.